Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, April 14, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Ms. Dr. Whitaker? Mayor Wright?
Here. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. There's a closed session tonight?
Yes.
And so what we're... How about if we try to shoot for an hour? How much time do you all need?
Okay, probably the remainder of it. So if we can get this done, probably in about 45 minutes to an hour.
Sure. Okay. Let's go ahead and get this, if you don't mind. And Brandon Niedel, you passed the seven. The objective is to get a budget adopted by June 14th. And we're here to help you do that. What I gave you...
By June 30th?
Yes, sir.
Budget needs to be adopted by May 15th.
Well, you got it to the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, you don't do it by May 15th. Last year, you went to the second meeting in May.
Right.
But I'm telling you...
I think our schools need to hear from us about the middle of May in order to be able to do their piece, correct?
Let's do the contract.
We're getting the seven for council right now.
Okay. Do you want me to...
Okay.
Want me to click?
Yeah. I see. I'll go over... Again, the purpose is to get you comfortable on making a decision. The word last night is that you have hard decisions to make. What I gave you was a status quo budget. And the status quo budget requires a tax increase, as you know. So if you don't want a tax increase, then you're going to have to reduce services. This is the comparative table that takes everything that a citizen pays, from real estate taxes down to water sewer, vehicle license, stormwater. You've seen this chart before. And it goes in an order from most expensive to least expensive. And these are the cities in Hampton Roads, as you can see. And these rates are as current as we can get them, the proposals that are included in everybody's budget. Norfolk, I think, makes their budget presentation tonight. How current are the Norfolk numbers?
We don't have any data for Norfolk yet. So Norfolk's may... Their burden may go up depending upon what they propose.
But as you can see, when you take a look at the bottom line, we're second from the bottom. A person living in Portsmouth would pay a total of $4,0232 as compared to these amounts for the other cities. This is the same chart that you directed me to put into the currents for public information.
Last year?
Yes, sir. This gives you a feel for where we stand with this proposed budget. Next slide, please. The major budget challenge is an $11.7 million gap in the general fund. And that's important to understand, is that that's the general fund. The general fund is funded primarily by property taxes. And so anything that you do to try to reduce the tax rate has to take place in the general fund, not in the utility fund, not in the debt service fund. You can't touch the debt service fund. But that gap was caused by unsecured budget appropriation of $6.4 million to the schools from the fund balance last year. And you got that ordinance before you. And as you can see from the language and the ordinance, it was a one-time expenditure. My budget incorporated that into the base budget for the schools. But at least one of you last night said, "I'd like to revisit that." It was also caused by a decrease in real estate values as a result of the Great Depression. That's nothing to do with Janie and her assessment. We're talking about the revenue side of the equation. How much revenue do you get out of your real estate taxes? Flat revenues and the impact of the economy, such as holes contracting state and federal funds. We know, for example, TRT... Not TRT, the old term. Hampton Roads Transit is being cut $5 million. The impact on us is a half a penny, a half a penny on your tax rate. And we have a large, large backlog of deferred maintenance. You encountered it when you parked your car this evening with the deferred maintenance that's taken place in the garage. You encounter it when you have to take the steps because the elevators don't work in this building. We have a huge backlog of deferred maintenance. Now, the backbone... Yeah, next slide. The structure of local government budgeting, and what makes it different from your private business, is that we use fund accounting. We account and budget for our funds by a fund, with our largest fund being the general fund. And that is where most of the services are provided. And that's, again, funded by the real estate tax and the personal property tax, for the most part. It's the one that impacts the real estate tax rate. You can cut the utility rate, you can raise the utility rate. It has no impact at all. You can cut the utility department in half. It has no impact on your real estate tax. What impacts the real estate tax is the general fund. It's where the basic services come from. Now, you think of garbage collection as a basic service. It's not in the general fund. You think of stormwater as a basic service. It's not in the general fund. It's its own separate fund. For example, mosquito control is hand-funded by the stormwater fee that we all pay. And so if you wanted to... Let's say there's a vacancy in the stormwater, and you wanted to eliminate that position. It has no impact at all on your real estate tax rate. Next slide, Deborah. And we have special revenue funds, debt service fund, which is protected. You've made a pledge when you issued general obligation bonds, that you would pledge the full faith and credit of the city to meet the debt service, which means that if the river rises, you're going to pay the debt service come high water or low water. You'll do whatever's necessary. So that's a protected fund. You have enterprise funds like the utility fund, those that look like a business. And those funds get their revenue from the fees that they charge. Now, if revenues don't equal expenditures, yes, the general fund can subsidize an enterprise fund. But it's an enterprise fund because you hope to make revenues equal expenditures. Internal service funds, such as the garage... We talked about the garage last night, where the garage handles and owns all the vehicles for the entire city and charges back to the department the cost of maintenance and the cost of capital. Then you have capital project and permanent funds. So if you think about these as being silos that stand by themselves, the silo that generates the tax rate is the general fund. Okay? Next slide?
Yes, sir.
Now, this is the fund balance. This is... You saw this chart before, okay? This is the fund balance we're projecting net, net of the soft uses for the debt service. Let's say everybody's got a mother, okay? Let's say that you promised your mother that you would back this little home business that she's got by $2,000. She's come to you and says, "Son or daughter, I'm going to start this home business. I think I can make it, but if I don't, I think I may need $2,000." You're not going to turn down your mom. You're going to say, "Okay." You've got $4,000 in your savings account. When you get your monthly savings account statement, you're going to think, "Okay, of that $4,000, I've only got $2,000 to spend because I promised my mom that I'm going to back her should she need this money." And that's what you've done with the schools. You've promised the schools that, as they start down this road of self-insurance on health insurance, that you would back them up to $2.8 million. So you've set that money aside. It's still in the fund balance. But you've got to save it in case they come knocking on your door and say, "Whoops, we've had some real bad experience, and we need the $2.8." You don't want to welch on your promise. You do not want to welch on your promise. And so that's why that money is set aside. Also, you have what we created last year, and you approved this, was a debt sinking fund. And that was to smooth out the increases in the debt service over the next five years so that you didn't have to raise taxes last year to cover debt service. And that totals $3.6. So this $2.8, this $3.6 is part of the fund balance. It's not part of that number because it's net of the soft uses. We know we'll use the $3.6 because that's been planned over the next four fiscal years so that you don't have to go up on taxes for the debt service increase. Now...
What other numbers are taken out besides those two? Everything else is there. So the actual fund balance would be the numerical figure above the chart plus that $6.4 million.
Right. Now, let's see how much you have to spend above your policy, okay?
John, just to clarify, this is the unassigned fund balance. So the assigned fund balance includes appropriations that have already been made by council. So when you decide you're going to use fund balance to pay for a portion of the following year's budget, we carve that out, call it assigned, because it's already committed to use. So that is not included in that number, but it is part of total fund balance.
So what do we got in the $39 million number there that's carved out already?
So that... What that represents is everything that's available for spending, including taking out the soft uses. So it's everything that you've adopted in ordinance to appropriate, plus the commitments that you've already made for the schools and our plan for the debt service sinking fund.
Let's say you didn't have a financial policy that determined how much fund balance you should carry.
You'd have all of it.
You'd have all of that to spend, minus you wouldn't have this because you've already promised that.
Got it.
Okay. Now... But the fact of the matter is, is that you do have a financial policy. And so how much do you have above that policy? And that's the next slide. And that's the $3.5. Now, you can add back the $2.8 and the $3.6. It doesn't do anything. It doesn't do anything to your tax rate. It doesn't do anything at all because it's part of the unassigned fund balance that you have carved out because you've made a promise and you're protecting that money. So you only have $3.5 million above your policy that you can spend. Now, you could spend four. You'd be in violation of your policy. And what would happen?
Barney.
You would get a slap on the wrist by the bond rating agencies because they would give you a demerit for not following your financial policies. You could spend another half a million. And they may downgrade your bonds or your bond rating. But there's no law that says that you can't spend $4 million. Is it prudent to do so? No. Is it wise to do so? No. It's prudent to keep this like a rainy day fund because you'll see later that in the course of a fiscal year, things come up. Things come up like the pines. An opportunity that you guys were geniuses on in buying that property. You have really done something really neat with buying the pines and buying this building next door strategically. Yes, sir.
So if we use that fund, we'd be in jeopardy?
Yes, sir.
But if we needed to use it to keep from raising the taxes, there's no concrete way in which we can say that we will be in jeopardy. I mean, or we will...
Well, you will be because it's one-time money. And it's like the analogy I gave last night about lifestyle. It's like having a lifestyle which requires you to spend $1,200 a month, but you only earn $1,000, and you've got that gap. And so where do you go? You go to your fund balance or to your savings account. But if you keep doing that, you end up with nothing. And then you hit a wall. And you either have to change your lifestyle, which for us is to cut services, or you've got to get a second job, which for us is to raise taxes. And so it's not wise. It's expedient sometimes, and cities throughout the country do this, and we've done it. You did it last year. It was expedient to appropriate $6.4 million by not raising taxes to the schools.
So we can do it, but it's not prudent, you're saying?
No, sir. It's not prudent. And if you go... Let's say you appropriate that $3.5 plus another half a million. You go below what your policy is that you've adopted. And where are you going to get fussed at is the bond rating agencies are going to say, "You have this financial policy. You ignored it. You spent money that you said that you were not going to spend. We're going to downgrade your credit." It's just like going to the bank. The bank is going to look at you if you're looking for a loan. What is your creditworthiness? What is your track record? What is your ability to pay? Okay?
Good.
Got it. All right. Next slide. Now, this is the uses of the fund balance this year. $6.4 million, one-time funds to the schools. And again, that's right from your ordinance. $7 million to cash fund CIP projects. And they're one-time. You know, you build something, hopefully, it's got a life of 20 years. You don't have to come back the next year and spend that $7 million.
Reimburse it.
$1.4 million... Here's what we did. We used $1.4 last year to balance the budget. Was it... It was expedient. Was it the best budgeting practices? No. That's two pennies on the tax rate right there. Last year, if you wanted to go with a completely balanced budget beyond the $6.4, you would have had to raise taxes by two cents. $1.1 million for debt service in the sinking fund. We had to give back, remember, more than a half a million dollars to the state. And thank goodness, the General Assembly in this session took that requirement off the books. And then $1.4 million for other appropriations after July 1st. And so it's important, if we go back to the other slide, that you carry as much in this rainy day fund as possible because things happen. Things happen. Opportunities come along that you can't ignore. Emergencies come up that you can't ignore. All right, can we jump two slides? Now, for the current budget. The current budget has no... No, zero. No fund balance in the operating budget. So you're living within your means. You're earning $1,000 a month. You're spending $1,000 a month. You're not dipping into your savings accounts to make up the difference. You are using... We are using $3.8 for cash fund CIP projects. That's okay. That's a smart way. It's like, would you rather buy a car and pay cash for it or take out a loan for the next five years and pay interest? If you can cash fund a project, if it makes sense to do so, do it. $3.6 million to continue the debt service sinking fund that we've already talked about. Again, we were looking at a sharp increase in the debt service. We knew that. But we created the sinking fund to smooth that out so you would not be facing extraordinary tax increases over that period of time. And we've already covered the fact that your policy gives you $3.5 above what the policy limitation is. So we've really pared down the budget to live within our ongoing sources of revenue. Next slide. Now, I have recommended this to you both orally and in writing, that we don't use the fund balance to fund things that are ongoing. That's unwise. And the remaining unpromised balance is only $3.5 million. Again, remember, you promised $2.8 to the schools. And that's over there. It's in the fund balance, but it's... If you spend it, then you're going to... You won't be able to deliver on your promise, and you don't want to do that. And we've just covered all this stuff, so we can go to the next slide. Now, you, in your looking at the numbers last year, I mean, last night, you looked to the actual column on many things. And I think it's important for you to look at our biggest... One of our biggest expenditures on the general fund, and that's our contribution to the schools. The schools actually spent $127 million in 2013-14. The budget was, for the year 2014-15, was $139. A change of $12 million are 19.8 percent. Now, the budget...
9.8 percent.
Yeah, 9.8. What did that say?
19.
19. Thank you. The budget that I have recommended is $146 million. The change from the actual in 2013 to next year is almost $20 million, 19.4, or 15 percent. And so remember, last night, you were using that as a benchmark as you looked at comparisons. Now, let's look at this. Please. Now, when you met with the school board, they told you that they did better than... That education in Virginia did better in this General Assembly than what everybody predicted. And they told everybody in the room that night that they anticipate another million dollars in additional state funding beyond what was in their proposal. If that is true, then I recommend that you take that million dollars off of the $6.4. And that leaves you with $5.4, okay? It hasn't changed their bottom line. And I think... And Bill, this is your idea. I think you ought to give serious consideration to phasing the $5.4 over a period of four years. Ramp it in. Ramp it in. And even if you did that, it would be 12 percent more than the expenditures, the actual expenditures for '23 made for 2013-14. Next slide.
Mr. Rowe.
Yes, sir.
Go back to... Go back to that slide.
Sure.
That does... That's a snapshot that, as you have used in the past, that doesn't take into account that over the past few years, the state has decreased its funding to schools. Also, the city has. And so when you're recommending balancing this off, the schools were already behind as far as funding is concerned. So a proposal like this, only looking at it from that perspective, that you're getting a million dollars more additional this year from the state, doesn't take into account that there has been decreased funding in the past from both the state and the city.
Well, let's go back. Let's go back to... There's a history that you can go, and this is factual, that for the last 10 years, the schools have not used in their operating budget every penny that the city council has appropriated. For the last nine years, it totals $90 million. That's nearly $10 million a year. $10 million a year. It's there in the cafard. You can see it in black and white. Now, which is it? Do they have enough money, or do they not have enough money? They took that money, and they put it into capital projects. Now, that might have been the smartest thing in the world to do, but there's a problem with that. There's a problem in the fact that this city council and every city council in the state of Virginia, every board of supervisors, is required by state code to appropriate those funds before they can be spent. But that's a different subject.
Yeah, it is. We've been through that subject. I'm just saying that...
But I'm telling you is that...
I'm talking purely from the fact that that million increase shouldn't be balanced on the city, that that shouldn't decrease what we are seeing coming from the city. Because unlike some other things, this will have significant... And has had significant impact on the education of our children, which, from the perspective that I see every week, our children have seriously been disadvantaged. And so this pay-as-you-go and hitting on education, I'm definitely not in agreement with that, especially considering what you said. This is the state of Virginia and state of Portland. I'm not in agreement with that at all.
I wouldn't call it pay-as-you-go. That's a very archaic term.
Well, that's an archaic... Because that's an archaic concept that you just presented.
It's not archaic when you appropriate... If I gave you $100, and you only spent $90, it's a fact that you've got $10 left. And that's what's been happening for the last 10 years. It's factual that the schools have not been spending all the money that's been appropriated for operating. That's a fact. I must stand on that. Let's go to the next slide. The next one. Go to the next one. The next one. These are... Now, let's look at some options for cutting costs. And remember, cutting cost is in the general fund if you're looking to reduce the tax rate. Tax rate is only in the general fund. It's not in the utility fund. It's not in debt service. It's not in solid waste. It's not in stormwater. Okay. We've already talked about the $1 million. We talked about the phasing in. And here's the cents on the tax rates. That's one penny and 46 tenths. That's almost six cents. Eliminate the raise for employees effective July 1. Now, this doesn't impact the constitutional officers because the General Assembly has given the constitutional officers a 2 percent increase in their salaries come September 1.
I thought we did a... I thought we were going to put them in our mix.
It doesn't make any difference. They get whatever the General Assembly... You can't keep that from them. Okay? So that's...
We let them take it back on us.
Remember, the goal is to get the 17 cents here or to get, in this column, to $11.7 million. And you've got to do it in the general fund. You can't do it anyplace else. Next slide. Well, wait a minute. Deferred maintenance, eliminate... Just push everything out. Don't maintain the elevators. Don't buy any... Don't buy a garbage truck. How long does a garbage truck last?
In the private sector, about five or six years. In municipality, they put the last eight cents. Y'all are trying to get 15 out of them.
Yeah. And when you've got an old trash truck and it doesn't pick up the garbage... Bill, how many times have you called me about citizens complaining to you because their trash wasn't picked up at 5:00 in the afternoon? That's the consequence of not having equipment that's ready and ready for duty to provide the services that your citizens... Most citizens don't think about the city until something like their garbage gets bypassed that day. But that's the... You know, it's a trade-off. Remember the old oil filter commercial, "You can either pay me now or pay me later"? That's what you're doing with the deferred maintenance. Next slide. Eliminate the subsidy for the Sports Hall of Fame. Okay, you had a discussion last night. That's a half a penny, okay? Defer the personal property tax. That's a quarter of a million dollars. That's a quarter of a million dollars in... You know, you really didn't have much of a discussion on that. You didn't look at that in the priority when you said, "John, put this in your budget." Now, I'm a veteran. I'm a combat veteran. And I can tell you where my heart is for veterans. And I probably spent more years in uniform... And I probably spent more years in uniform than anybody in this room, bar done. I know what it means to serve and to serve the country, and I respect veterans. But I can tell you, too, that if you're disabled, you get tax-free income. That income that you get is not taxable. And this is a nice benefit, but as you're weighing choices, folks, this one should be on the table. I don't recommend it. I've told you where my heart is, but it's on the table. Do not enhance the cemetery maintenance. Last night was interesting. Go to page 3.2. Now, does this position come over here to 18.58? You're not going to get to adoption of the budget that way. You need to decide whether or not you want to put additional money into enhanced maintenance of the cemetery. If you don't, that's okay. That's okay. But the downside of that is that you're going to get complaints, and you're going to get letters to the editors, and you're going to get photographs in the paper. It happened last year. This is not hyperbole on my part. But that's okay. You can make that decision. HRT. Again, that is because of the reduction in federal state funds. This is another shift of this federal responsibility or mandate to local governments. Is that smart? Not in my perspective. The people who ride public transit, for the most part, for the vast majority, are transit-dependent people. What does that term mean? It means that they don't have any other mode of transportation, maybe except for a bicycle. If they did, they wouldn't be on the bus. And so, if you reduce this, then you reduce the level of service. And that person that's riding the bus, because they've got a job at Maryview Hospital, that they've got to be there at 5:00 in the morning, they're going to find some other way to get to the hospital, to get to work. And when they do, you lose that rider forever, because they're not going to come back. It's a spiral. But you can do that.
What is our total, that brings our total, and that's an increase from HRT, that makes our total expenditure, what, two, yeah, close to 3 million?
The total amount that we put in there was about 3 million, so that'll drop it back to somewhere between--
2.6.
No, I'm talking about the addition of this, which is in the budget. That would bump it over 3 million?
He just gave you that answer.
That increase of 3, that increase takes it to about 3 million. And that maintains the same level of service, so that just means we've got to pay more of a local share to maintain the same level of service. We've cut the local share of the level of service.
And to me, that whole concept, reason why they needed more money, the federal government is cutting back, because, you know, that's 1940s template here for providing transportation. I was in a Portsmouth restaurant about two weeks ago, and in the span of three hours, three buses came by that you could actually see in the windows. They weren't covered up, so you couldn't see the lack of ridership. And in those three buses, there was less than six people on three buses. And as you ride around town, I invite everybody in here to start noticing the number of people on buses. Now, granted, the people on the buses, that's of value to them, and they need public transportation. But we still have the same size buses as we did in the 40s and carrying way far fewer people. That has to be adjusted. That's an expense. That's a capital expense. That's an operating expense for, we'd be better off, I think, and probably giving them a voucher to utilize Uber or whatever it's called, or even taxi service. $3 million is a lot of money.
Don't disagree, Bill. And that's a policy decision. That's why your jobs are hard. I mean, you ran for this job. You've got hard decisions to make, because what you're doing is talking about what level of service you're going to provide to citizens. And you have a fiduciary responsibility, too. That fiduciary responsibility is to take care of the assets of the city. So, you know, you're in a tough job. I mean, you're determining not only what you're going to spend next year, what level of service is, but you're also laying the groundwork for the next year, just like last year's budget laid the groundwork for this year. And not having the 6.4 secured to a funding source, we've got a 10-cent hole in our budget. Pick a number. It could be 10 cents, I mean, 10%, it could be 20%, it could be 50%. And this is kind of peanuts when you're looking at 11.7 million, but as somebody said, you know, every penny adds up. But these are just some options that you can come up with. Now, there was a huge discussion last night about vacancies. And remember, the report that I gave you was every breathing person are vacant, that seems to be a contradiction, across the budget. It was the vacancies in utilities. It was the vacancies in the garage, which is not in general fund. It was the vacancies in all these other funds. When you take a look, can we go to the next slide? The vacancy report, too, is just a snapshot, and you're right, I use that term, but it's, that's exactly what it is. You take that snapshot on the 24th, it's going to be different from the snapshot that you take on the 25th. Unfortunately, people get sick and may have to stop working or die. And so, the compliment that you have on Monday may be different from the compliment that you have on Tuesday. But using, using the snapshot that I sent you, which was back in March, as I told you last night, back in the early 80s, as a matter of expediency, what the city did, if you had a $10,000 salary, the city decided not to fund that $10,000, let's make it 12, it works better, $12,000, they funded not 100% or put $12,000 in the budget, they put 11 or something like that, because they knew that, in the grand scheme of things, it would be turnover. And so, with turnover, even if you're going to fill the position, you've got to recruit for the position, you're going to have a lag time, there's going to be a period of time where you're not paying money out. So, instead of budgeting 12,000, they budgeted 11. And they did that, and I remember it well, because I was the manager of Suffolk, to keep from raising taxes, so that they didn't have to fully fund the salaries. And so, for the last 30 years or so, that's what the city has been doing, is not fully funding the cost of salaries. They've already backed out turnover expense.
Mr. Rowe, can you, can you explain, make sure you're clear on what you're saying there on that first line under the relevant vacancies are in the general fund, that first hyphen?
Okay.
When you said 2.4 million--
I just did.
--this program, are you, are you saying that you, of that 4 million that shows up on our spreadsheet, that 2.4 of that 4 million are positions that you're saying can remain vacant? How are you interpreting that?
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the analogy that I just gave. The city doesn't fully fund its salary cost. And in this case, it didn't fully fund the salary cost by 2.4 million.
Okay.
Okay? Now, is that smart budgeting? It's not the way I would budget. I've never put a budget together like that before I came to the City of Portland.
In the predicament that we find ourselves heading to, it seems like that would be a viable direction to go in, as opposed to laying people off or other things that might have to happen if we don't fund those vacancies.
Well, it's not a very strategic way to do it, though. You've got to decide what's important to the community. I mean, yeah, that's an easy way to do it, but let's take a look at, at the snapshot on the 24th. Can we go? Is it smart for, how big is our payroll? Pretty big. Is it smart not to have a payroll supervisor? Now, that's kind of a back-to-office job. The person that lives across the street from me probably wouldn't even know where the fifth floor is in this building. But it's an important function. Is it important to have five police officers on the street? And that's what you would do if you said, okay, we're going to defund, because you'll be taking them out of the budget. And so, automatically, you have reduced the size of the police department. And if that's what you want to do, that's fine. But do it strategically. Give it, you're backing into it the wrong way.
Well, strategically, looking at those positions that haven't been utilized over a period of time, those would be the positions that we would key in on.
Well, but that, that's different from a conversation that says, let's eliminate all the vacancies. And let's go to the next page, and you've got this piece, huh? Let's go to the next page, if I may. E-911. Now, E-911, this is, again, pay me now or pay me later. You don't want to put closed-for-business sign at 2:00 in the morning. That's a high-stress job. Public safety is a high-stress job. We have people who get post-traumatic syndrome. Beck and I were talking about that today. There's just so much human suffering that you can take before it gets to you. And so, you've got to operate the E-911 center 24 hours a day, but how are you going to do it? You're going to do it with overtime. And so--
How long have those five slots been available? You've got five vacancies. How long have they been available?
It--
I was fully staffed about 45 days ago. I have five vacancies now.
Remember, these are snapshots. This is the snapshot as of March 25th, the day after your last council meeting. Wednesday, March 25th, the day that the school superintendent's reception, that gives you some point in time. Eliminate, but do it strategically. Decide what's important. Decide what your citizens think are important. Yeah, eliminating a position that's not filled is easy, because you don't have to face somebody and say, I am sorry, this is your last day, or your last day is going to be June 30th. But remember, and I don't bring this up for hyperbole, I recommended that we do away with the mounted patrol last year. And I walked into the council meeting, and several of you guys, you didn't say it because you weren't here, said, John, that horse has got to go back into the budget. John, that horse has got to go back in the budget. Think about what you want to cut. You wouldn't manage your household budget that way. Don't manage what people elected you to a position of public trust that way.
I just think that, you know, going through that type of transition, trying to reduce any tax hike, that the community would, I think, be joyful about that rather than standing about it.
Well, remember, none of, none of that appeared in that some options chart that I gave you. But the total, can we go to the next one? The total savings is not the 4 million. It's something less than the 4 million, less by 2.4 because of that expedient thing that the city did back in the early 80s of, okay, we're not going to go up on taxes, because we found a rabbit to pull out of a hat. We're not going to fully fund salaries.
And I think it's also important to note that several of these positions are also supported by revenue. The mosquito control position, for instance, is entirely paid for by the stormwater fund. So, if we eliminate that position, that the revenue goes away, and the net effect is zero. So, we haven't really, we haven't really saved anything by doing that.
And think, and think about August, when you're going to get the call. The mosquitoes are eating me alive in my backyard.
So, we're not funding mosquitoes now?
We are. We have a vacancy right now. And if you eliminate all these vacant positions, then you're cutting into the service delivery. That's not a big operation in the first place.
We've got somebody we can multitask, teach, you know, maybe a garbage truck guy can run. I'm only messing with you.
Next slide. That's it. Let me say this. This is not a contest between you and me. We're on the same team, folks. And I'm trying, I'm trying to help you have the information that you can make decisions that you feel comfortable with. You've got to weigh what you're hearing from the public, from public expectation. You know, this is, this is April, but, you know, summer's going to come, and let's take the mosquito control. People are going to call you. They haven't called you yet, because you're not on city council, but come August and--
Call you.
Yes, sir.
I think you have challenged us to take a closer look, and I think you can identify with last night, that most of us took a closer look, trying to avoid this hike, and I think we've gone over and over. I went to sleep looking at this last night. Normally, I go to sleep with another book, but last night, I went to sleep with this.
So, yeah, it's challenging to us.
Yeah, you know, and we made a lot of, a lot of points last night, identified a lot of things, and quite frankly, I thought we were going to come in today and take some of those things that we said and map them out. You know, we, we didn't talk about HRT, because we knew we can't do it. We didn't, we didn't, you know, talk about veterans, because there was no interest in cutting that, you know, and didn't talk about it. We talked about the things we wanted to deal with, and I thought you were going to do what Mr. Moody said, was come back with some Plan B or something like that, but most of this was still telling us what we, what we can't do. And the other thing, you know, this has been bothering me since, since last night. You know, I've, this is personal. You know, I lived in four states and three countries, and been a lot of places and a lot of people, and I've never had anybody tell me I wasn't, call me reckless or not And if I didn't know that I wasn't reckless, and that I was measured and thoughtful than most, I would be taking a serious look at myself. You said that two or three times last night, and I'm only addressing it in this forum, because you did it in this forum. I would put that with a conversation, you and I relationship, we could have had a conversation like that one-on-one. But you call all of us, you know, unsmart people and reckless people, and I didn't, I didn't take, so I thought you would come in tonight and give us what we, what we asked for, a Plan B. If you want to get to wherever, this is how you do it. But you came in more defending, defending your position. You, I give you credit, you were candid tonight. You didn't, you didn't call us, tell we weren't smarter, call us reckless tonight. But, Mayor, and with that being said, I think that we need to have a call meeting, and we need to direct what we want to be done with this budget. It is now our budget, and we're not going to get that. I heard more about schools and what their problem tonight. None of us asked to do that. That was the budget that brought to us. So, we talked more about that than we did any other things. You know, there was $2 million risk management thing, we didn't talk about tonight. There was a lot of, lot of million-dollar things we talked about last night, that I thought we were going to get some clarity on tonight, that we didn't. Instead, we got more of why we can't reduce the tax rate. So, I'm suggesting we have a meeting that we get together, and we say, this is what we want to do. we want to do," and have it be done.
Right. Dr. Wood.
Yeah, I agree because I thought that the budget that was presented the other night in the chambers was the manager's budget. And procedurally, then that comes to council, and then we review it, and we give recommendations, which we went through quite a bit last night. And as I stated, I thought that those recommendations would have been taken into account. However, looking at what you were proposing, and you speak about our fiduciary responsibility, there's also a moral responsibility that's higher than that. And some of the things you've suggested here that we didn't raise, as far as balancing the budget on the children and poor folks, I take offense to that. 61% of what you presented as other options was... Were options that we did not recommend, and also, they're balanced on poor folks and children. And I definitely don't support that type of philosophy.
Kenny.
Yes, sir.
Let me say this. Yes, that did say reckless, but that's a corporate recklessness. And I get, you know, when you go to the doctor, you don't pay the doctor to give you good news. And if you don't like the message, you hardly ever shoot the doctor. And when professionally, when I think that you're doing something that puts the city's finances in jeopardy, you pay me to tell you that, okay? I said last night that my observation is that many of you don't understand this budget, and I stand by that. Government budgeting, local government budgeting, is difficult. And just the discussion that we had last night about the, "Where is the 2.8?" describes that home. I could take offense at what you just said. You just called me immoral, and that's the same type of inference. And that's not true, Mark. That is absolutely not true.
Don't call me by my first name in public.
Are you trying to regulate my speech?
Don't call me by my first name in public like that. That's very unprofessional. This is a professional setting.
Are you done?
I'm done.
All right. Any other questions come yet, Doctor?
I just feel like after all is said and done, we bounce back and forth with what needs to be done. Ultimately, it boils down to how we vote on it and which direction we want to go.
Right.
In the meantime, every facet of information that we receive, I believe it helps us to make a better decision. And we might not all agree on it. The manager might not agree on it, but the citizens are looking toward what we're going to do. And I think that's the bottom line that we need to look at and feast upon. And sometime, I think the manager said earlier that we're going to have to make some hard decisions. Everybody's not going to agree with it, but those that voted on us are based on the premise that we're not going to raise taxes. We've got to do it the best we can, the best we know how. But we've still got to keep the city floating and alive to receive increase in new buildings, new businesses coming to the city. And we just can't box ourselves in. We've got to be open-minded. And all of these things are built into our thinking, I believe, to make the budget work. Thank you.
So if, in a simplistic form, we've got a, what, a $12 million gap over what size budget? If I come back and divide that in, and it's 8%, I could simplistically tell you to go back to your departments, and I want an 8% cut, and then you come tell me across the board... Don't shake your head. I'm just making an example. That's a simplistic way of saying that. And if you're telling me you can't go back to all of these departments and request that, the ones pertaining to the general fund budget, then there is a stalemate because we're not here to just keep playing tennis, going back and forth. He's presented a budget, and they've staked out a position as the management and his team. If we don't agree with that, it is now our job to say, "Here's what we want cut," and it's his job to do what we tell him. Not to continue to tell us what's wrong with what we're doing. We've heard enough of that. We've got a month to go. We're either going to cut this thing or we're going to raise taxes. We can't keep bringing up one point, and then he comes back with a counterpoint. Or you make a point about one thing, and he brings it up and talking about cutting E-911. Who in the world wants to do that? Or cutting schools? Who wants to do that? So we're playing games on this television is what we're doing. We're going to either make cuts or we're going to go out and ask for an increase. And if we're going to make cuts, then we need to go through here and say, "Here's what we want to cut out here, the services," or tell him, "If it makes 10%, you go back and bring me a 10% cut across the board." And tell me what that does, okay?
You ask how much the general fund is, is $242 million.
Okay. So if I ask you to go and bring us, find us $12 million in cuts...
Six of hearts.
Right. What would be the proper terminology to say, "Go find it and bring back to us recommendations that deal with the general fund so we're not playing, 'That's in the utility fund,' or 'This guy works for VDOT, so he's not there.'" What is it we need to ask you to say, "Go back and bring me a $12 million delta"?
Don't you think it's fair to ask, "What is a sacred count?" Let me say this because...
I know, John, but we're going to go around and around. Nobody wants to get rid of the cop on County Street, and then the house burns up, and you say, "Remember, y'all said get rid of that." We're saying across the board, we need to either make those cuts or we're going to fund this. And you can't tell me if it's 6% or 8%, we can't go find those numbers. And if it does mean a body or two or a service or two, then we need to know what that equates to.
I can do that.
If it's five people, okay, then we need to say, "It's five." I don't mind meeting with the five and letting them know why we're going to let them go. But that's the level of where we should be at this thing and not this back-and-forth planned presentation. Yes, sir.
I think it's a moot issue, then. If we wanted to go that way, we need to vote and say, "Let's go that way."
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Moody.
You know, that sounds good, but thinking back to last year, John's absolutely right. We couldn't get rid of a darn horse. We succumb to the pressure of a horse. What was that total?
$80,000 bucks.
$80,000. Now, we're talking about $12 million. We need to back up the rhetoric with some backbone if we're going to do that.
Again, taking things out of perspective, there was nothing else in there that did that. And to go and cut that horse, what it does for our children and what it does in our community and the value that that horse add, we thought was prudent. It wasn't...
I'm using the horse as an example of lack of...
Bad example because...
No, it's not.
Right. There are other things that are goodwill in our community that we do. Our golf course, there's Sports Hall of Fame, all of those other things we're funding because they're goodwill things. And that horse, as far as I'm concerned, fell in that category because children and that horse and the value it adds to fairs and community days and all that was worth $80,000. I think majority of council felt that way. So to use that horse as the budget piece, I think it's a bad example.
It's about 6.8, 6.85%.
Okay. So we want a 6.85% out of the general fund, okay, from the manager, and tell us what that equates in services and personnel?
Yep.
Okay? So is it okay for we, as a council, to direct that while we continue to look at these other things? Because we've got other pieces in here that we discussed last night about the other services.
We gave directive last night in regards to vacancies, the sheriff, Sports Hall of Fame, Portsmouth Partnership, equalization step increase. We mentioned those things.
You mentioned them, but you didn't direct.
Well, we thought you had enough sense to know that's what we were directing.
Well, I don't have the sense.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So where are we at with those pieces? I mean, those things need to be looked at. I mean, we do. We need to look at all of those things. Where are we at with those numbers? I mean, did we ask for something to come back here today?
We asked questions on all those things. Mayor pointed out some things, got some answers, some inconsistent answers, some answers that... Some things we never did get answers to. I thought we would get them tonight. We did not. So I think we had to do what we just talked about. We had to come in and say what we want, and we have to...
So we're... I mean, take an example, the sheriff piece, and I know this is a top... Did we discuss any about the relationship that we have with the other localities and how we have vacancies? And because our department is not following the partnership agreement that we have with the other cities, we're basically costing ourselves $1 million a year. Isn't that what you sent us in the report? We're spending about $600,000 paying the regional jail for empty seats or cells. And then we're spending another $400,000 paying our sheriff's department to house those people over here. So that's $1 million that we're paying. That discussion didn't go on last night.
Yeah, we talked briefly about it, and we...
I mean, that's got to stop, or we just take $1 million out.
The manager was going to get back on the other half of that coin, and that's the per diem that would be lost.
Take or pay. Now, the sheriff's department is split-funded between the state and the local government. You have to fund your share, okay? But you go beyond that. You fund more than your share for all the constitutional officers.
I understand.
Okay? So if you cut their budget, you can't cut the share that matches up with the state. You'd have to fund the supplement. You'd have to cut the supplement. You'd have to cut, for example, I wasn't here, but it was my understanding that when the new courthouse opened, you funded some totally 100% locally-funded positions. That's what you would not fund. Now, the constitutional officers are independent of you. They don't work for you. They don't work for me. And they'll be the first to tell you that. And so, if you're looking to... You can't direct the sheriff to house prisoners anywhere, but you could reduce the budget if that's what you're saying.
That's exactly where I'm at. I'm not directing anything. If we're not going to have the level of cooperation that we need, that all hands on deck, that everybody is trying to chip in to make sure we close this gap, and we got a department that's costing us $1 million just because they don't want to do what they determine what we said, that's not acceptable. And not just the sheriff, it's anywhere else with the constitutional officers or anybody for that matter, John. It's across the board. Because you can go to every one of these constitutional officers anywhere else, and they're going to bring you a story about how this little lady just saved you $1 million. And if you get rid of her, you're going to lose $1 million. We get it all the time. So we need to cut all of... And suspend with that baloney and get down to what it is we want to do. And if it's shaving that budget, how much do we need to shave there versus the other ones? And go back to them as well as your departments and everybody else here and say, "We're getting ready to take... Get a haircut. We want a what, 7%? We need a 6.8% haircut across the board."
Pressure a different way. Don't do the percentage. Do it by the gap. If it's 11.7, you don't want a tax increase, then you've got to take the whole 11.7 out of the budget. That's the way to do it because that's the real number.
I started out asking you, how should we ask you to go do that so tomorrow or next week or whenever? If we call a special meeting, we want to go down to the nitty-gritty of what this thing actually means.
Yeah, all right.
To every department, down to either the person or the service or whether or not we make up with overtime, whether or not we freeze the step with the police. I mean, that's a whole nother issue. We go through that every year, okay? And we get arguments on both sides. They're not the highest paid. They are the highest paid. Did we talk about the fuel?
Kenny.
Did we talk about vehicles being driven home? Did we talk about freezing all of that? How much are we spending on vehicles, police, fire, sheriff's department, people driving cars home? And how much? How much are we spending on gas? All of that stuff is what I want to see. I don't know what you guys asked. I want to see... It doesn't matter. It's a horse.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying that.
Hold up, Mayor. I can't hold my hand up too much longer.
You got the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. We're just going around in circles. Let's give some bullets to the direction of the manager, and let's tell him what we expect. And let's leave it alone. We're beating a dead horse. We're just going around in circle and circle. And I think everything that contributed to us to give us better directions, there's some things we want to cut and some things we're not going to tolerate, it's been articulated very well. Now it's time for action, and it's time to fold up our books and just wait for what we have asked to be done.
The bishop is absolutely right. We know what the gap is. All we have to do is direct the manager to come back with a budget that does away with that 17 cents.
Totally.
Yep. Totally.
Okay. And we want to know what that means. We don't want to come back and find out, "We just sold the horse and the young lady on the horse." Don't say, "I got it closed. We don't need to spend it." We want to know what that means. Articulate what those cuts mean.
I've been doing this for a long time. I got it. But I tell you, when I give you this recommendation, it's only human nature to think that because you did it tonight, that I'm playing politics, that there's some agenda here. There's not at all. I haven't staked out a position on... I'm not arguing with you guys. The final analysis, I don't vote. You do.
That's right.
And if it's a consensus that you don't want a tax increase, you want to eliminate the 11.7 million, then I'll bring that back, okay? I asked you if you had any sacred cows, and you've told me none.
I said, "All hands are on deck. We want something responsible." I don't want you to come back and you've taken 20% out of schools and 1% out of your police department, that kind of stuff. That's what I mean. All hands on deck. Be reasonable and fair with the cuts across the board. And then if we want to come back and say, "Hey, we want to fund this because it's that important," whether it's schools or whatever, then we'll take a deeper cut over here to be able to compensate over there. That's our job. And that's our job to go and respond to the citizens who may or may not like those decisions. But we've got to quantify this so we'll know. And so, that's why I said, "Across the board." And then, you know, if we look... If, again, if it's schools that we want and it's 10 cops that we don't want, or the equivalency is schools or 10 deputies, then we've got to make that decision.
And let me say this. We took good notes last night, Paige. I don't know what time you guys got home. I know there was a rump session in the garage, but we didn't have 24 hours to respond. We're going to respond just like we do for...
I missed that garage session.
We're going to respond...
I was in Atlanta.
We're going to respond to every question that you raised. Some take time to do. Part of the night's briefing was to help get you comfortable with your understanding of the budget, how it is structured. And if you want to eliminate the tax, you have to look at the general fund.
I got it. I got it.
I got one question. All right. One thing we've got to keep in mind on the CIP when we were talking last night about the bonds...
That's on the table, too.
I know.
CIP is on the table.
But the bonds, I know, but those would be later on recurring debt to the city. And I don't want to be back in the same position next year. So we need to push off something. I would like for you to recommend that.
Yes, sir. And yet, Dr. Wood.
There is a golden cap. Leave the schools alone. No one last night brings that... So, well, Mr. Moody.
Nobody is sacrosanct.
Leave the schools alone.
That's one voice.
Where we at? Oh, we'll cut across the board and let us look at it, and then we can add and take from that.
If he brings us everything we just talked about tonight, we'll be able to keep the schools whole. I mean, we've got new positions and 15% for courts and all kinds of stuff in there that there's money. You know, if we get everything... If we get what you asked for tonight, there'd be more than enough money to lead the 6.4 in there for the schools.
I think so, too. But again, that's why we need quantify what it is we're doing, and then we'll take the hit for that. And I don't want to personalize it. I don't like to call departments and Hall of Fames and all those things because it is across the board, and then we've got to make those decisions. Okay, anything else there?